My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The rules of procedure adopted annually to ensure a productive meeting. The select board meetings are in the public, not of the public, meaning the members of the public in attendance are entitled to the opportunity to comment, but the purpose of the meeting is for the board to be able to effectively and efficiently conduct the necessary business to govern the town. All questions and comments are to be directed to the chair, and the rules of procedure indicate that there will be two minutes allotted for comment from any single person on any single topic. The rules of procedures are posted in the town hall and are available for anyone to review. Thank you.
All right. Welcome, everybody. We have tonight Bob Jones, Mike Beecher, Jessica Van Ork, Brian Crossman, Rich Hewlett, and I'm Kristin Powers. And I have everybody that's here tonight, so thank you. And online, we've got everybody signed in. So I have no additions, other than what we're... There was the... Yeah, the agenda was distributed with the public hearing, but there's no additions from me. Does anybody else on the board have any?
Under old business, I have a couple grant updates.
Okay.
I can mention about our... The Volret grant that we... Last week, we had the little walkthrough in West Pollet. I can update on that. And I also have an update on the MERP grant, the M-E-R-P.
Perfect. Anybody else have anything to add? No? Okay. The minutes that need approval tonight are from our last regular meeting, which was August 20th.
Have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carried. Okay, so we can go to the public hearing, correct?
Uh, yes. Oh, yeah, sorry, I kinda jumped around, but there we go.
So the first public hearing is for...
Is to the bylaw repeal.
The bylaw repeal.
That's the one we warned to be the first one.
Okay, I guess we probably should read that.
Yeah.
The warning. I didn't think to.
Do we have the warning in front of us?
Hmm, no. Do you have the warning?
I should. Let's see who can find it first.
All right, let's see, let's see.
I think I have it here.
You're the winner.
Yes, okay, here's the... So, "Notice of Public Hearing, Pollet Select Board, Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024, 7:00 PM, Pollet Town Office, 122 School Street. The purpose of the hearing is to repeal the Town of Pollet zoning regulations, the unified bylaws, per a valid petition that was signed by at least 5% of the Town of Pollet voters and was received by the Town Clerk on January 17, 2024. The geographic area affected includes all areas of Pollet. The full text of the existing Town of Pollet zoning regulations can be reviewed at the Town of Pollet Town website and Town Office located at 122 School Street."
Okay, so after we got this petition, the correct sequence of events was it went to the Planning Commission, and they reviewed it, and they came up with an opinion?
Yeah, we wrote a report that's required by law, the Planning Commission. For those who might not know, I'm also the Chair of the Planning Commission, which is why I'm speaking to this. The Planning Commission wrote a report and held its own public hearing, at which a number of people who are present right now were also at that hearing. Thank you for your participation. Some change... No, some changes were not made to this, they were made to the other thing. And so people made their voices known at that public hearing, and then with the Planning Commission sent its recommendations to the Select Board. The Planning Commission did not recommend that we repeal the zoning bylaws, and in the report that the Planning Commission wrote, there were a number of reasons why that does not support what's in the Town Plan, to repeal the bylaws. And now it's in the Select Board's hands.
So, does anybody in the audience have any comments on why or why not we should repeal the bylaws? Brad?
Thank you. Bradley Meyerson. Before the hearing, I took a look at the Town Plan and the zoning bylaws. Section 2 at page 6, "Objectives and Implementation," there were 15 separately numbered objectives in the Town Plan. Purpose of the Town Plan is to guide development according to the 15 major objectives, most importantly, to promote the health, safety, and general welfare of all inhabitants. Number 2, protect and conserve the value of property. And number 3, to conserve and encourage the value of community. The Town's... And this is Town Plan at page 18. "The Town's Unified Bylaws Promote Cluster Development, thereby affording a new level of protection for agricultural and open lands. Through zoning, the Town of Pollet strongly and affirmatively supports the continuation of traditional agriculture." So my question is, why would we want to destroy years of work and careful planning at this time without any reason whatsoever, just because we don't want to have zoning anymore? What would Pollet look like without zoning? All you need to do is to go to New Hampshire, and a lot of towns over there, they don't have zoning, and it's like development run amok. If we didn't have... What if we didn't have setbacks? What if we didn't have minimum lot sizes? What if we didn't have limits on development over a certain... Certain, what, 1,500 feet, I think it is? But there are so many important regulations to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community, and to preserve and enhance agriculture in the town. It is a terrible idea, and I ask that you deny the petition.
Thank you.
Do we know what the petition... Can you read what the petition warned? Why there was... Excuse me, why there was a petition?
I'm sorry, I couldn't quite understand everything.
What did it say in the petition? Why was there a petition?
I can find the text of the petition. It was fairly short, and no one communicated exactly the purposes behind the petition. Let me pull it up, though, to read to you the... In fact, let's see. Okay, so it simply says, "Shall the voters of Pollet rescind the Town of Pollet Unified Bylaws adopted by the Town of Pollet Select Board, July 13, 2021." That's what the petition says. So, yeah, it does not give any reasons why, and I do not wish to speculate.
Bob?
Bob Schreberlin. I really support the basic zoning laws that were commented in 1978, I believe. Being in real estate and presenting the Town Plan, keeping the floodplain from being developed, the farming, and it's really worked generally very well, so I support not getting rid of zoning.
Thank you.
Very strongly.
Jim?
Jim Sheldon. I know where the petition came from, and it seems like zoning as a whole has been great up until 1997. Then it seems like when you read these bylaws, there are certain things that are coming into play, such as, if you look in there for changes, conditional uses. It used to be we were in agricultural residential, we were in commercial, there was a list of things that were allowed to do. Now those are all conditional uses now. Recreational vehicles. If you own a piece of property and you want to run a recreational vehicle on there, now you need a permit to do that? Are we... I don't know if anybody has seen it, but our taxes are going up, and they keep going up. So when we're talking about devaluing property, show me the devaluation of the property. And I think a lot of people, 5% of the voters, have said that we want to be able to see some of these things that are going in here that are outrageous for people that own property and want to do stuff on property. That is a little out of control. So I think for 5% of the voters, I think this is a democracy. I think that people should be able to vote the way they feel necessary. If people want to put stuff into zoning, and they want to do that, and then they vote on that, then that's fine. I think that if 5% of the voters have said that they want to appeal, I don't think anybody wants to appeal at all, but I think they're fed up with all the slide-ins that are going in. And I think that this board should allow the voters to put it on a separate petition where the voters can vote, and if the people vote, just like they vote the board in, or they vote anybody in, then they should be allowed to speak their way. If the vote comes in and they want this, that's 100% fine. I'm not against voting... Or zoning bylaws, but I'm against somebody that owns a piece of property that can't do something on their property, like ride a recreational vehicle and pay $10,000 a year in taxes, when taxes don't go down. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I could tell you one thing. Every bit of discussion that goes into the zoning bylaws are held in a public meeting, and the best way for you to get your changes that you want is to go to the Planning Commission, where you can voice the changes, where you can work through all these things that you don't like, instead of waiting till the last minute and throw everything out because you didn't take the time to get involved in the beginning.
Well, this isn't me. This isn't me. I didn't write the petition.
This is what I'm saying, is a general opinion on the whole idea about voting on the bylaws. It needs to be something that gets worked all the way through from start to finish, not come in at the 11th hour and just say, "Oh, I don't like them because of X, Y, or Z," and then you've wasted all those years of effort that's gone into it in a public meeting, in a public forum, where everything is accepted and listened and worked through. I've seen a lot of Planning Commission meetings, and that's how it all goes. We have it in a public meeting, just so people can put their input in, so we can work for the good of everybody, including the 5% that signed that paper.
May I just say something to the... So the idea of that we should change the bylaws is different than the idea of we should repeal them entirely. And the petition clearly said, "Shall we repeal them?" So if there was a petition that said, "Shall we change them and get rid of this thing and that thing and that thing," that would be a different petition. So we can only... As the Planning Commission can only deal with the petition that came before us. Now, the second hearing tonight is on the amendments to the bylaws that the Planning Commission was working on, and I will say that when we had our public hearing at the Planning Commission about that, a number of folks showed up who had some situations that were things they couldn't do on their land that they wanted to be able to do, and we were able right then to sort of write those into the bylaws to fix it up for them. So, I mean, a couple of the Planning Commission members are here tonight in the audience, and I'm sure that they could speak to that as well, that, you know, we... The Planning Commission has been trying to make the bylaws easier for people, and so it's one thing to work on them, but what this petition said was to repeal them.
So does anybody else have any comment on the petition to repeal them completely? Yes, sir?
Ed Evans. We were at the Planning Commission. I thought it was a very fluid meeting. I thought it was a meeting that the board had actually been in touch with people about the conflicts that they were facing and were adjusting those parameters. I thought it was just one of the best government meetings I've sat in in a long time, so I'm very, very pro to keeping the bylaws. I like the way that our community works within itself and listens to the voice of people, and the committees adjust those, you know, rules, regulations, and conditions, and the objectives of Pollet. I never want to speak for my wife, but, you know, we fully agree. Thank you.
Deb?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to say also that I was at the hearings as well, and I thought... Or the hearing that the Planning Commission had, and I also support maintaining our unified bylaws. I also was very impressed, like Mr. Evans just said, and I agree with a lot of what Brad Meyerson said. As people were expressing their concerns, changes were made to the planning... Or to the unified bylaws in the moment. So it... Like what Mike said about showing up for these meetings and expressing your concerns really does have value. I think from what I gleaned from some of the meetings was that if we did not have unified bylaws, then we would be answering more to state regulations. I thought I also had gleaned that a lot of our bylaws are as a result of state regulations. But the bottom line is, is that I also do support maintaining unified bylaws for the Town of Pollet. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb.
I can just make a... Make a factual comment regarding what Deb just said. Currently, Pollet is a 10-acre town for the purposes of Act 250, which means that it's parcels above 10 acres that need to go through Act 250, the state zoning, if they want to be developed. If we did not have unified bylaws, we would revert to being a 1-acre town, which we were up until a few years ago, and then folks between 1 and 10 acres would also have to go through the state process.
Is there any other questions or comments regarding the public hearing to vote...
Repeal the bylaws.
Repeal the zoning bylaws? So we will close this part of the meeting, and because our other one is warranted for 7:30, we can maybe start on some of our rest of our Select Board business and come back to it at 7:30? Jim?
Question, does this get voted on tonight, public vote by the Select Board?
No, we're not going to vote on it till next week. We let it sit for one cycle and then vote on it.
Okay.
Frank, did you have your hand up?
Oh, there's still another question.
Okay. Do any announcements tonight, Kristin?
No. Kristin Lauren is on the... The bridge is open.
The bridge is open, okay.
That's a good announcement! Yay!
That's excellent.
Yes.
We know it's contested, Deb.
Yes, big celebration. Thank you, Sue, for organizing.
Organizing the initial grand opening ceremony, thank you.
Good to have it all.
Nancy? The zoning administrators' report?
So zoning, we have 26 permits to date. I did have a question on the bylaws and that is to when they are implemented, if they are voted on next week, do they become effective immediately? Because I actually have three properties that would be affected positively by the zoning bylaw changes, and that all has to do with those small-scale lots being able to reduce their setbacks.
Right, yeah. May I speak to that? I don't know the answer to that, Nancy. I believe that... I believe that there is some ability for when a zoning bylaw is going to be updated, that when it's sent to the Select Board, people... I think there's... I think there's a... I think there's permission to use the new ones temporarily, but let me... Should I contact BLCT about it to find out for certain?
So in both these... Or in all these cases, construction isn't like imminent, they need to know. But, you know, I didn't know if there was like a 30-day waiting period like there is sometimes with some of these.
I don't think there's a 30-day waiting period, but again, I'm not entirely certain. Let me find out the answer for you and message you about it tomorrow.
Thank you. And that concludes my report.
Anybody have any questions for Nancy? Okay. Planning Commission?
All right, I have a Planning Commission report. The Planning Commission met on Monday, August 26. I have to say that it was kind of nice to have a little gap between big Planning Commission situations. We were actually able to have a little more broad-ranging discussion of some matters. We talked about what we should work on next, since we finished our current work this year on both the Town Plan and the bylaws. We decided that next we're going to work on the Enhanced Energy Plan, which was drafted several years ago, but we still want to move ahead with. It will need some updating to meet new state standards and to reflect changes that happened over those years in how our town uses energy. We also discussed two other local planning concerns. These were the lack of cell coverage in the town that has been brought to us by a lot of folks, and also the work that's going on right now that the Select Board has started to get a new town garage, which could then lead to relocating the Pollet Fire Department to the side of the old town garage and out of the floodplain. And the Planning Commission brought up, was there a way the Planning Commission could assist in that work at all? Because it had come to our attention that, you know, a lot of times, the Planning Commission does a lot of working drafting really specific things in the bylaws, and sometimes it's good to look bigger picture and think about, you know, what things have people brought to us that the town really needs. So if there were... We want to look into ways that we could help with that lack of cell coverage and also the work toward the new town garage. So I don't know if the people on the Select Board who are working toward that have anything the Planning Commission could help with. The Planning Commission has stated their interest in being of assistance. And that's my report from the Planning Commission.
Brad?
I would ask that if and when a new town garage is built, could it be named for Keith Mason?
Excuse me?
Could be named for Keith Mason.
Oh.
Oh.
Yeah.
That's very... That's a good thing for us to consider when we poll, when everything all comes together. Thank you for that. So, 7:23. Do we have time for a road foreman's report?
We do, as there is no report from the Highway Department tonight, but we did, as of today, welcome a new team member to the Highway Department, so Jim Simons. I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, began today. So Damon now has another team member, so one of the applicants that we offered a position to as of the last meeting has accepted the role. So I've met with him a couple of times. He's lovely, and he came in today and met with Julie, and so they're off to getting started, which is great. But other than that, I have... Don't think, unless I got one. Nope, I have no report.
The Assessor's report?
There is an assessor's report. So due to Karen Folger's schedule in other towns, Karen will now be in Pollet on Mondays only, beginning the week of September 9, and Lisa will be working in the office one Monday each month and as necessary from home, so slight adjustment to the assessor's office hours. And we probably have time for the Town Clerk's memo, too.
I think so. Deb, would you like to read your memo, please?
Yep, I only have two things on there, and one is a DDL application for a third-class license that just needs a motion and approve this evening. And the other thing was to let the board know that I had applied for and was granted a $5,000 grant for election expenses between now and the end of the year that are above and beyond what might be budgeted. And I also just wanted to add, too, that going back to the hearing, Jessica did make reference to an article with regard to a town in Vermont that's dealing with some issues with their unified... Lack of unified bylaws. And I did read the article, and it is a very, very good article. I think it's worth a read. So thank you to Jessica for sharing that. And that's all I have.
Anybody have any questions for Deb? Approve the DDL application, 47279. Have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carried.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have anything else for me?
Nope, I guess not. Thank you very much for joining us.
Yep, thank you. Have a good night.
Julie is not joining us tonight, huh?
She does not appear to be, but I have her memo.
Okay.
So there are two warrants this week. Payroll is $8,368.58, and accounts payable is $123,626.95. General fund money is $22,495.62. Highway fund, $8,999.62. Waste water, $1,089.95. And the equipment fund is $99,500. Friendly reminder to everybody, property taxes are due next Tuesday, September 10, by 4:00 PM. Run, don't walk. And the two motions that we need tonight are for payroll warrant 25015 for $8,368.58, and accounts payable warrant number 25016 for $123,626.95.
And that equipment fund would be... I looked at the invoices, it's for the truck setup.
The outfit.
The outfitting of the truck. I'll move that we approve payroll warrant 25015 and accounts payable warrant 25016.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carried.
No. No, I think you just have to sign there because they changed the rates. It's quiet in here. Sorry. That was a loud envelope. Um, yeah, let me get that back up again. Did I close it? I might have closed it. I'll get it back up again.
Okay.
Okay. All right, here's this public hearing. I don't know if we have to read all of that there.
And we'll have to kind of breeze through all those, right?
Yeah, I can... What I'm planning to do is to pull it up on the screen and just... I've highlighted in yellow all the things that are new, so we can just scroll through for a while.
Okay.
All right, shall I read this one? All right. Notice of public hearing, Pollet Select Board...
All right, notice of public hearing, Polat Select Board, Tuesday, September 2024, 7:30 PM, Polat Town Office, 122 School Street. The purpose of the hearing is to amend the Town of Polat zoning regulations, unified bylaws. The geographic area included is all areas of Polat. And then the warning goes and lists all the articles that are changing. I will pull up in just a moment those on the screen and go through them. The full text of the existing and proposed changes to the Town of Polat zoning regulations can be reviewed at the Town of Polat Town website and Town Office located at 122 School Street. All right, let me find, am I a co-host? I have shared screen, yes. Oh, nope, I must not be. Thank you.
Now you are.
Now I can. All right.
Maybe I'll try to move this to the, do you guys still see it up there by evidence? Actually, maybe I'm going to just take the whole leg down. Is that any better for anybody?
Okay. So this is the bylaw amendments that the planning commission has been working on for, I think, a little over a year, some of them a little longer. This revision was made possible through a bylaw modernization grant program administered by the Department of Housing and Community Development. So I'm just going to scroll down through, and the highlighted in yellow will be the parts that are new, and I think if anybody has any comments on any of the parts that are changing, that would be a good time to bring it up. And then at the end, if anyone has any generalized comments on this update, that would be a good time for that. So the purpose of this amendment was largely to do things like reduce setbacks, reduce lot coverage requirements, especially in the village centers, and to make it a little easier for people to do things on their land. All right, so here's the first change. We listed categories of use and, and defined them, exempt, permitted use, and conditional use, because there was some confusion. I was confused when I first needed to get a permit, that a permitted use didn't necessarily mean that I could just do it, it requires a permit. And then conditional use, you have to go to the development review board. So that clarifies that for folks right off the bat. This section seven, other use is not listed. This is something that was recommended by our former zoning administrator, Jonas, before he passed away. It says that other uses not listing in a zoning district may be permitted if the finding by the development review board shows that such use is clearly of the same general character as those permitted in the area. So that will allow the zoning administrator, I think we had a situation where someone wanted to do catering, and, but catering wasn't a listed use. And so the development review board really had to kind of turn themselves in knots to figure out, was this allowed? So putting this language in here will make it be that if something is close to an existing use or similar of the same general character, that even if it doesn't quite fit into something that's already there, that the development review board can, can grant it an approval. All right, so a couple changes that you'll see here throughout are two family dwelling is being added as a permitted use in every district where a one-family dwelling is now permitted. This is because of new state law. You'll also see these two conditional uses appearing in a lot of places. Recreational uses except exempt uses which do not require a permit, as listed in Article 8. So this has to do with, the exempt uses that don't require a permit are people doing recreation on their own land. Obviously, nobody needs a permit for that. That's fine. This would be recreational uses, like someone wants to put up a trail network and charge admission for, you know, a commercial sort of recreational use. And so we tried to draft this language to encompass various recreational uses, or like a horse stable, or something like that, where the people are going to come and they're going to ride the horses and they're going to be charged money. Right? So that's why this is going to appear in most of the zones. The other one that's going to appear here in most of the zones is event venue. This also came about because someone came to the planning commission with a concern. They wanted to put up a wedding barn. But again, a wedding barn wasn't something that was listed already in our zoning bylaws. And so the planning commission discussed it and thought, you know, a wedding barn seems like a perfectly normal thing that someone might want to do to host weddings. But it might not, we didn't want to just put in wedding barn, we thought we would broaden it out a little to event venue, because that could encompass other sorts of events that people might want to have. You know, someone wants to have, to host a bunch of meetings, or, I mean, it wouldn't be like a convention center, but you know, a wedding barn, or a place that's going to have a festival every weekend, or something like that. And so we put that as a use in conditional and in most of the zones as well. So this change here to the maximum building height, before it was 35 feet agricultural building accepted, and now we've changed it to say that the DRB has discretion to approve higher maximum building height in accordance with the criteria that the DRB has. We talked to John Weiss, the fire chief, about that, and he said that the idea behind the 35-foot height is because they don't have a ladder truck, and so we don't want really tall buildings. But say someone was going to put up a building that was a bit taller, and they had a full sprinkler system in it, and it didn't, wasn't going to be a fire hazard or anything, then it might be able to be considered. So we added that in there. Probably not going to happen, but you know, say someone needed a 40-foot building, that would be an option that could, could exist. So here we are now in industrial district. Not much has changed here, except adding the two-family dwelling, the recreational uses, and the event venue, and the maximum building height. Okay, a lot of things have changed in the village and commercial district. Oh, I see, Nancy.
Yeah, so I thought, well, we're getting to village and commercial, but how we had during the discussion that we were going to extend that decrease in setback for any lot size in any district under one acre.
We do. And that appears later, we did that, Nancy, and that appears later under the pre-existing small lots area.
Okay, so it's not in every, it's not listed in each district?
It's not, it's not listed in each district. It's listed later in the thing about pre-existing small lots. If it would be good to put a bullet point in each district to say-
I think we just might get clearer.
That pre-existing small lots, okay. I think that would be a very reasonable change to make. Let me make a note of that. Then folks who were looking in this section would know that that was a thing. All right, in village and commercial, we have broken out restaurants and retail stores to small and large. Restaurants and retail stores were previously all under conditional use, and the thought was, in village and commercial, this is the center of the village. It makes sense that people would want to make a restaurant or a retail store, and might not need to go through the full conditional use review. So for a store under 5,000 square feet, or a restaurant under that size, we put them under permitted uses. And then you'll see under conditional uses is the larger restaurant or retail store. The idea being that if it was that large, the DRB would want to weigh in on how it was going to affect the area. Other than that, everything else, I think, other than that recreational use, any event venue are the same. Here's the big changes. In village and commercial, we're thinking about, especially about West Polat, and how in West Polat, there's a lot of really small lots, and people have had difficulty with setbacks in West Polat, not being able to build much on their land because of, it used to be a 30-foot setback from most of the sides, and that's really difficult on a very small lot. So with that in mind, we have altered the setbacks from the front property boundary to be zero feet. That means you could build up to the sidewalk. That's actually how a lot of the buildings in the center of West Polat are built right now, is right up to the sidewalk. And this minimum setback from any side or rear boundary is five feet. So this is, this is a change for village and commercial, to make there be fewer setbacks. We've also altered the lot sizes. This one acre is actually still the same. So for village and commercial, we have a difference between where sewage disposal is available, which is in the West Polat wastewater district, and then where it's not available, because where it's not available, folks need enough space to put in their septic. So it used to be 12,000 square foot lots were the smallest you could do where sewage disposal was available. We've have that to 6,000 square foot lots. A few lots in West Polat that exist are even smaller than that, so. And the lot coverage used to be, I think, 25 or 30% maximum building coverage. We've changed that to 50%. Again, thinking about those small lots, there are some small lots that are basically just a building and cover, if you were to say you can only cover 25% of your lot, which is very tiny, you wouldn't be able to put much of a building on it. And then we have this bit here, where municipally operated, I think this was Frank's baby, where, where the sewage disposal is available, the DRB does have discretion to approve more lenient standards for setbacks, parking requirements, and driveways. All right, so that's village and commercial. ARR, agriculture and rural residential, this change here is just to add two-family dwelling in addition to one-family dwelling. Once again, you see the recreational uses. We did add under potential conditional uses, personal services. That's like, you know, dog grooming, or barber shops, or something like that. And we did add retail store also under a potential conditional use in ARR. So if someone wanted to open a store that wasn't a farm store in the agriculture and rural residential area, they'd have to go through the DRB. Okay, so other changes that we made, this one here, available on-street or, and/or off-street parking, this was a request by the DRB, the development review board, they wanted a little clearer guidance on this. So they have a certain number of things when they have to review someone's permit that they look at, and parking had not been listed on there before. And so when someone wants to put in a store, or any other kind of development that might attract customers, or might need parking, that the amount of available on-street and off-street parking would be something that they can look at. So we added that. Going on down here. This, under multifamily dwelling, once again, this is change, this one under number one is changing it from 12,000 square feet to 6,000. So to make it be a smaller lot would be possible. This one under number four is new language required by state law. Under number five, again, changing 12,000 square feet to 6,000 square feet. Under building trades or excavation contractor, there was some stuff in here earlier about how many employees you could have and some other stuff, which seemed, which seemed especially onerous, and Gary was very in favor of changing it, and so we have changed it to sufficient off-street parking will be, shall be available, and that's really the only requirement for a contractor. Event venues, that's the new thing that we added. The two conditions we put on that were that sufficient on and/or off-street parking shall be provided for event attendees, because that's the thing that we thought might be the most disturbing to other folks in the neighborhood, was if there wasn't enough parking, people might just park everywhere for the event. And the development review board shall determine whether the anticipated frequency of events is likely to have an adverse effect on the conditions. So the DRB can consider, if someone's having a wedding barn, if they're going to vent it out, you know, a couple times a month versus they're going to vent it out every week, versus they're going to vent it out every single day, that they might have a difference of opinion in the DRB about whether that would really fit in the area where it was located. Right. Probably have a bit here with nothing. Oh, no, we have this one. This one is also required by law. For residential development, appeals of conditional use approvals in Polat state-designated village centers, which is Polat and West Polat, may not be appealed solely due to an undue adverse effect on the character of the area affected. And this, I think the reason the state is doing this is so that folks don't just appeal, appeal residential development just to say, oh, it, it messes with the character. Now, if it did something else, like make there be too much traffic or something, they can still appeal it. But I, I believe this is to cut back on NIMBYism. All right, there'll be a few more things here. Okay, this previously had language about exactly what kinds of setbacks were required, and we just changed it to say this is under, what is this section called, Nancy? Is it the planned unit developments?
Yes.
Yeah, it's under planned unit developments. The DRB can permit lesser setbacks if wide setbacks are not required. There's a few more, but not a whole lot. Here's the part you're worth looking at, Nancy. Under section three, development of existing small lots. This is a big change, and this is one that folks came to the planning commission meeting and asked about, and we thought it made a lot of sense and just stuck it in here. So any lot that, in individual, separate, and non-affiliated ownership from surrounding properties in existence on the effective date of these regulations, may be developed for the purposes permitted in the district in which it's located, even though not conforming to minimum lot size requirements. And the dimensional standards of the village and commercial zone will apply to any such pre-existing lots of one acre or smaller. So this is that folks who are in ARR or industrial, who have a really small lot, under one acre, will be able to not have to have those giant setbacks, that they will be able to put up something. So Nancy, you think that that should then, that language should basically be put in every section up there? Okay, sounds good. Just a couple more, folks. Okay, this is all about parking. I'm not going to go through it in great detail. The gist of it is that most of these said you needed like 1.5 parking spaces for every unit, or 1.5 or two parking, parking spaces for each guest room. We just changed it down to one parking space. If people feel like they need to provide more parking, they certainly can, but this is just a minimum standard, so it wouldn't be quite as onerous for someone to provide parking spaces. We know parking is tricky.
Frank?
There's another section, I think, that sit waits that the DRB has filed a discretion by-
Oh, yep, that's also in here, Frank, right here. The DRB has discretion to determine parking requirements. So if they thought it should be less onerous than this, or something, they could, the DRB can, basically, the DRB can make their decisions. If they're like, ah, I see that you don't quite have enough parking spaces, but it looks like it will work out with your situation, the DRB could say thumbs up. Signs. We added, except at the DRB's discretion about signs, so that if there was a situation with, if someone wanted a sign that wasn't on here, they could petition the DRB for it. This language here about one sign not exceeding four square feet is exempt from permitting. Before, it said what kind of signs? It was like, signs about this or that, or like, just, just any old sign. So, so anybody in ARR can have one sign for, for free. The only other thing we changed about signs, oh, we had no sign in village and commercial may exceed 32 square feet in area. That's a really big sign. You'd probably have to have a billboard to make it bigger than that. And the only other thing here was, we were not going to have, we already said that you can't have illuminated signs that cast light onto other people, that you couldn't have flashing, oscillating, or revolving signs. And since it's become a thing, we also put in inflatable signs and motorized signs. I think that when this was originally made, people probably didn't have inflatable and motorized signs, but it's become a thing. I was in, I was over in Grandville yesterday, and I saw the big, like, pop-up inflatable guy, so, yep. Under camping trailers, I don't know if we added this or altered something about it. The camping trailer may be occupied on any lot for a period not to exceed 90 days in any 12-month period. I think that was there before, but it's something about, it got altered a little. Do you recall?
What we removed is that, except in permitted zones, or something like-
Oh, yeah, it had something about like what kind of zones.
It's not permitted in any zone in the town anyway.
Yeah, so we just, we just simplified it to say that, rather than talking about which zones. All right. Moving on along here, accessory dwelling units. Again, this bit here, oh-
Excuse me, Jim?
Jim?
I just had a question. Is that a camper trailer that's even registered? If it has a registered vehicle in it, like, say, you're, you camp during the summertime and then you park it during the wintertime, does that put you in violation?
No, you can't, you can't live in it for more than 90 days.
Oh, okay. So if.
If you parked in your driveway and you can't live in it for more than 90 days.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because we have had some situations with folks just permanently living in like a camper trailer, and that's not hygienic for people to live there constantly.
Right.
Yeah, that was a question.
Okay. Yeah, I lost my place here a second. There was a thing here that I, ah, yes, accessory dwelling unit. So if you have an accessory dwelling unit, it'll be considered a public building if it's rented for more than one day a year, and therefore shall be subject to fire and building safety codes. Any building that's rented is considered a public building, so this is just clarifying that an accessory dwelling unit would also be considered that. This one here is extremely simple. It's telling you where to put your digital copy of your plot. Okay, under the list of regulated flood hazard areas, adjusted a few of these. I think that some of these that were conditional use review before are now permitted, and a couple, and it's clarified that a bunch of these things in the actual river corridors are completely not allowed, because that's the area where the river goes. There's only a couple more here, folks, and then it'll be open for any thoughts or comments that people have. Oh, here we are, okay. The small accessory buildings, which are less than 100 square feet, I think it said 64 or something before, we just clarified that. Somewhere else, it says 100 square feet, so we're making sure that it all matches. And less than 12 feet, I think it was 10 or 8 before, don't need, these are things that are exempt. So your small shed that's under that size is exempt. You don't have to get a permit for it. And these are all the other things that don't require permits, like outdoor recreational trails, garage sales, these were all in here before, minor grading and excavation, yeah, all this stuff is all exempt. And this is clarifying about the structures without a permanent foundation, that they are the same as structures on a permanent foundation unless it's a trailer on wheels. Okay, I think we've only got one more thing. I think in the definitions, there's a couple definitions. Oh, this one is very long. Again, it's required by law. This is basically saying that the DRB can't require things that are larger than the minimum that is in the bylaws. This hasn't ever been a problem with our DRBs, that they'll be like, okay, randomly, your building has to be smaller than what it says in the bylaws, but evidently some DRBs in the state have done this. So this is telling the DRB that they can't make requirements that are much more stringent than what is already in the bylaws. They can make them easier, looser than what's in the bylaws, but they can't make them more And then the last ones here, the accessory dwelling unit already had a definition, but the state law updated it to talk about, I think, the size, the unit does not exceed 30 percent of the total habitable floor area of the dwelling, or 900 square feet, whichever is greater. And then they also just updated the, again, required by law, updates to what a multifamily and two-family dwelling are, which is very straightforward. And that's it. That's the changes. Got through them all.
Okay. So now we'll open up the floor to any questions regarding any of these changes. Frank?
One comment is that a permit, a person applying for a permit may find that their idea, their project doesn't exactly fit. And so there could be a hearing with the DRB for variance. It would be an option to try and make sense of something that wouldn't be covered. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we did add a lot of language in here about how the DRB can permit things that don't quite fit, because we have had a number of situations where people had perfectly good ideas that just didn't quite fit with the language in here, and so we've been, we tried to add that language at the beginning, saying, if it's close, the DRB can approve
Bob?
I have two quick questions. What is a building that is attached, like an attached garage with a one-bedroom called the garage? If it's not attached, then you have to get another septic permit under state regulations. So what's the definition of, you know, of an accessory?
An accessory dwelling unit? Let me go back up to find it a minute, and we'll double check, unless you know off the top of your head, Nancy.
No, all it says is subordinate to the main unit, and it can't exceed 900 square feet.
Okay, so it doesn't say whether it's attached or not attached?
Doesn't say if it's not attached, but I think it does say something about the septic on it.
Okay, let me, let me find that. Let's see. Accessory dwelling units, right here, okay. Will it go there? It will, magic, okay. Here's what it says about the accessory dwelling units. It's a distinct unit that is clearly subordinate to a single-family dwelling and has provisions for independent living, including sleeping, food preparation, and sanitation. It has to be in compliance with all of the following. It has to be located within or appertinent to a single-family dwelling. So it could be attached or next to. A single-family dwelling can only have one ADU. The property to which the ADU is appertinent must have sufficient wastewater capacity. So it doesn't say it needs a separate permit, it just has to have enough capacity.
Okay, well, whatever Charlie Clark, you would call the den, the third bedroom a den, so therefore you wouldn't have to expand your septic capacity, you know, it's a gray area.
So, yeah, that's what it says. It does have to have sufficient wastewater capacity. The one, the one on my house has its own septic, but.
Yeah, that's, that's a state requirement.
Yeah, and it is true that there are some state requirements that are not addressed in our bylaws, because they are state requirements. Like wastewater permits don't come from us, they come from the state. So, yeah.
Brad?
I have a question that came up in light of something that was said earlier about requiring a permit for the use of a recreational vehicle. Under permitted development, this is at page 41, paragraph 2, you, the zoning administrator can issue an administrative permit for recreational vehicles used in the special flood hazard area.
Okay.
Page 41, paragraph 2, sub F.
Yeah, so in the, in the special flood hazard area, there are, it's much more restrictive than everywhere else.
Right, but when you go down to paragraph 5, the bottom of the page, it lists exempted activities. And then it goes on subsection O on page 43, it lists recreational vehicles, provided they're fully licensed and road-ready, are exempted activities, not requiring any kind of a permit, correct?
So that's under O here?
Yes.
It, O just says recreational vehicles must be fully licensed and ready for highway use.
Okay, I apologize, it skips.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm going back up to double check.
Well, look.
Yeah. I don't think it says that they will, I'm not reading it as saying that they would be exempt, just that they have to be licensed. And then you'll see in the, let me go down to this. Where's our, sorry, I'm looking for our grid here. Here we are, here's our grid. Okay, recreational vehicles are in here under number 17. So they can get a permit to be used in the special flood hazard area or the floodway, but they cannot be used in the river corridors. And my reading on this, tell me if I'm wrong, Nancy, is that the recreational vehicles don't need permits in other districts. It's only if you want to park them in the flood zone, like, and use them there, that you need a permit. Is that how you would read it?
Okay, thank you, because I want to clarify it in light of what was raised earlier.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, in general, the purpose of the bylaws is that any private recreation doesn't, is exempt. It doesn't even fall under this. It's only recreation that is commercial in nature, where someone is paying to come do recreation on someone's property, and it's a business that it would really fall under the permit structure.
Is there any more questions on the floor regarding these proposed bylaw changes? Okay, and we'll close this portion of the public hearing.
Thank you, Mark and John, for showing up.
And we'll vote on both this and the appeal of the bylaws at the next regular scheduled meeting.
Let me just stop sharing so we can see. I'm not seeing that anyone online has their hand up at this time, so.
Thank you.
And thank you, everyone, for coming to the hearings, I mean, everyone who came to the planning commission hearings, I appreciate it, and I'm sure the select board also appreciates folks showing up to these hearings here and making your voices heard.
Yes?
Can I just thank you all for all the work you put in here? And I would say, better be than me. So, well done, thank you.
Well, John and Mark are here, who are also on the planning commission, and they've put in a lot of work, so we should thank them also.
Thank you.
Good work, guys.
Thank you guys very much for your effort.
Good night, everyone. Emergency manager?
Nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight. Health officer?
Jennifer shared that there was a dog bite in July, which was reported on in August, and she's spoken with the parties, and it seems like there's been a resolution.
Okay.
So, all good.
Nothing that I've heard from the wastewater, everything seems to be.
I haven't heard anything either.
Facilities report. Anything going on with any of the facilities? Everything good? Perfect. Natalie?
Nope. They're.
Older unfinished business.
Okay, so I have older unfinished business.
Hold on, I'm just gonna, hey, guys.
If anyone's talking, can you take it to the porch, maybe? We're still, we're still meeting, thank you. I know that's what you were going to say.
You nailed it. I was going to say, you don't have to go home, but you can stay here, but I felt like that was not right.
That's the lyrics of the song.
But there, I just said it anyway.
So shall I do my grant stuff?
Yes, please.
Okay, all right, so two things. One is that last Thursday, Mike was there, and I was there, we had a little gathering in West Paulette regarding, looking at where we might put a park bench, picnic table, a bike rack, and a little bike repair station. And I think it was pretty well attended, a bunch of folks showed up.
I was quite pleased.
Yeah, and they had thoughts about things, and we've pretty much had consensus on where we'd like to put these things on the town-owned lot in West Paulette. And my update is that I have contacted the grant people to start working on the amendment to the grant. So Nick has put together a map, and they're going to start drafting the amendment to the grant. Once it's ready, I will have to bring that to the select board to sign, so that we can repurpose those funds. But that's, that's all about that.
The only thing we did see is there's quite a lot of sumac growing along that parking lot right there, and I would like the permission of the board to ask Damon to just go down there and knock that out. There's, there's a few maples coming up that everybody would like for some kind of shade around that, but I don't think.
Yeah, if you want to put up a picnic table, you like that shade, but the sumacs are.
Right, so I don't think that would be a big deal. He may be able to take them out with a tractor even, but I'll, I'll get, I'll reach out to him and talk to him about that. And that was Frank.
And Jessica pointed out, it being that your other grant for the sewer plant building, that you're, they'll fund a survey of the lot.
Oh, right, yeah.
That, that will come in the next discussion.
Oh, okay.
We'll talk about that, so.
Yeah, so, so for that, the, the, so we're working with the Rutland Regional Planning Commission on the wastewater plant, and they are moving ahead with that. I think you got that email also?
Is that, oh, no.
No.
Okay. Yes, I did.
Yeah, so they are, they are willing, under that grant funding, to fund getting a survey done of that town-owned lot next to the wastewater plant, because there has been some concern about where the line is between that and Ray Duquette's property. So we'll know exactly where the line is once they do that survey.
That'll be part of that project.
Yeah, and they're putting out an RFP right now.
And I gotta sign in on that, I gotta remind.
Yeah, okay.
I saw it, and that they want comments from us. Said, everything looked pretty good, except for one part, the way it was worded, and maybe you can more eloquently phrase it, but it said that some people are getting off the sewer system because of the expense, but that's not really true, because they can't.
I think, I think what happened was that somebody who was a duplex, downgraded to not being a duplex anymore, and went from two to one hookups.
And that's what, that's, okay.
That's what that's about.
And that's, I was thinking, no, they can't just say, no, I don't want it anymore.
Yeah.
But that's, that's exactly what's happened.
You think that's the case, Frank?
Yeah, and Eric, when he was zoning administrator, there was one place with two units, membered parties lived there in one half, it was right across from.
Yeah, so that's why that was phrased like that, okay.
And they gave up, because they want to pay the additional sewer bill. But the new bylaws will allow, if they're.
Okay, Frank, thank you.
Yeah, will allow that.
Okay, so then the last thing on grants is, so the MERP grant, Municipal Energy Resilience Program, that we got the energy audits done on the town hall and on the library earlier this year, that Frank was helping out with, they are now moving to the actual, the grant money is going to be available, and Rutland Regional Planning Commission wants to help us write the grant. Evidently, it's a quick turnaround, it's only like three weeks to a month that it's open for this grant. So I will be meeting tomorrow with one of the people. I mix up Ethan and Nick and Greg, but I will be meeting with one of them about this grant. It's not Greg, yeah. And basically, because Paulette ticks all the boxes, we will probably qualify for the maximum grant, and we'll be able to do most everything that is on those, that was listed in these energy audits. So this includes insulation, it includes upgrading the heating/cooling system using, using non-fossil fuel stuff. So like how we got the heat pump up here, we could get more of those, we could switch the air conditioning at the library over to that, and a number of other things that can be done to make the energy use of the lower of the buildings. So basically, he says, at this point, there's not really anything the select board needs to decide on. He's, he thinks that we can just apply for the whole grant for everything and then see what happens. We, he seems like it's pretty likely we're going to get upwards of $400,000.
Wow, that'd be awesome.
Yeah, and if we get that, I think that we can do, and, oh, and they also want to do like the leak sealing around windows and doors and all that stuff, but that won't cost that much. So, yeah, so I'm going to meet with him tomorrow to work on that, and I will bring an update on it and anything that we need to decide on or sign at the next meeting. But it seems like it's rolling pretty quickly, so, but he's entirely willing to write it and get it through to the state.
Okay.
And a good plus is there's no match.
Yeah, this is a, this is a no-match program. They just give you money. It's because the state buildings in the past have been able to get money to, you know, seal up leaks, to fix up insulation, and to switch over to more electrification rather than using as much oil or propane. And I'm pretty certain also that this can stop us, we can probably get a better, what was it, Frank? In the library, they heat the water on the boiler. They can probably get just a plain old standalone heat pump water heater, it's going to cost way less, won't have to run the boiler all summer to heat the water.
You could probably just use a gallon a day.
Yeah, and I'm, I think this is also going to help with like thermostats, to like improve the thermostats and things like that, so anyhow. So anyhow, we're just going to apply for it, and again, I'll bring it back in two weeks to see if there's anything we need to decide on. But he says, right now, there's nothing really to decide on. It seems like we'll probably just qualify.
One of the big issues would be the windows, historic, and we're working on something on that. And they would like to see heat pumps in lieu of furnaces, fossil fuel. And I'm thinking, well, maybe they should have a gas backup in case heat pumps just don't work at certain temperatures, so that there would be something backing up, and gas wouldn't degrade.
That'll be all outlined before we do, before any action is taken.
It's a concern, though, because you don't want everybody wearing their coats and everything out here in the cold.
And I think that's, I think that in the list of things I saw that are approved, that's one of them, to like have mostly heat pumps with like a backup. That was one of the things listed in there. So we'll, I'll talk to him about it tomorrow, and I will get back in two weeks.
Okay. Is there any old, any other old or unfinished business going on? Oh, we're doing good. New business? Nothing? All right. Public comment?
I'd like to commend Jessica. She doesn't have enough time in the day. She still does a lot of work, a lot to get to where she gets, and I just think that a round of applause.
Appreciate that.
I have multiple hats, and I like doing it.
Good. Is there any other public comment tonight? Thank you all for coming. Have a good evening. Bob?
I'm actually mostly adjourned.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Post carried.